Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 28th at 10:00 p.m., and we are convening as the Provo City School Board of Education. We're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah, and we'll begin with a roll call. I'm Jennifer Partridge, Board President.
June Hill is Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Megan Wagner, Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Devin Daly, Business Administration.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone else who's here with us today and thank everyone who's helped to make this meeting possible. Do we have a motion to convene our study session?
I believe that we convene our study session.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Boyce. Do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Board Member Van Wagner. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in study session, and we are going to begin with our Board Member training, and today that is Melanie.
Okay, this was about establishing board procedures. When I was looking at this, it basically says that while the law prescribes rules of order and procedure for public meetings, boards have a broad discretion in how they structure and conduct the meetings and governance. So I looked, and in our board handbook from pages 10 to 13, you can see some basic ideas of what we do and how we do Robert's Tools of Order, and we updated this in January of 2025. I don't see that board handbook on our website. I don't know if that's something that we have transparency, just a question about that. Anyway.
Still the problem with I...
Yeah.
Sorry, the board handbook is a PDF. I don't think so, it's not ADA accessible.
Oh, okay.
So we can put it under Employee Resources, or we can use the process to turn it into a webpage, but that's going to take some time.
Yeah.
If you want it there, we'll get it there.
If you want it, then we'll get it there. That's a good attitude right there.
Yeah. I just don't know if that's something that we absolutely have to have, because the other part I was going to talk about is that we have our multiple policies and procedures in 1400 series, and those are located on the district website, and we recently reviewed those, and we actually voted on some recently. It's important that we review these often to make sure that meetings are held under agreed practices and that we are kind of parent of the public. So my only question is, is if we want to have the board handbook on the...
I think it's fine, we all can access it, which we have our Google Drive.
Okay. We have the other policies.
It's easy to access, and then if someone wants us to email it to them, we can do that.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our next item is our TPU construction update.
Yeah.
We'll turn it over to... So we have Trent and Josh here to give us our presentation, and we'll let Josh run that, because he came early and proper.
Thanks.
If we can get connected. Can we do... Yep, we can. All right. There we go. So TPU High, when we last met, we were just finishing up the helical piers that were inside the building everywhere, and so let's just go ahead and roll on forward. Let's go back to the basement where we left off about two months ago and jump back in down there. The piers had been completed, and now we have got into the structural steel. The structural steel's intent is to hold up the floor above it. We've brought today just a little physical example of kind of what we've got going.
I love it.
It's a little bit bigger than the lug nut on your car, but...
I think it's enormous.
These beams have had to be slid in around and under and between piping all throughout the structure underneath. We call these stanchions. The stanchions came up, and then actually our fabricator came up with this great idea of taking that nut and creating, or you can wrench it down, create tension on the floor above, and then we welded that nut in place. And so all the beams, all this work has been done. I'm going to fly you through just a little bit of the complications associated to it, and I want you to understand what you're looking at. This is a beam that's going in place. There's the space above it. Guy's on the ladder. It's being held up by a forklift behind him, and they have to jack it into the wall. This is another one where the space is very, very tight to the ceiling. So different applications all over. It's not just like a straight beam going down. They're at all different elevations to miss the existing piping. So if we go to the next slide, you'll get a kind of an idea of the guy with the forklift holding it and all the piping that they're trying to dodge and work their way around as they get prepared. This is another area to put the beam in and to provide the stanchions. All of this work is done. We didn't break a fingernail. So completely safe, nothing, no injuries, no anything there. So we're totally completing that space. If we go to the next slide, the next thing we did after that was completed, we did mention, I think, two months ago, that the floor, under the floor, the sewer lines and the... well, the sewer lines and the sump line particularly were all rotten. We've gone back in, socket the floor, removed all that piping, and installed all the new, along with the new sump pump that was there. This is a picture to give you an idea now. The beams are in, the room is basically back together, and we're starting to put the final cleaning on that room now. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that just spit-shined and really ready to go. So that's kind of the basement, which, to some great degree, will kind of complete the work scope down there. So last time we taught, there was boilers that had not quite been put online, and all the boilers are online. They have been problematic from the very start. We fired them up, they tripped out. We fired them up again, they tripped back out again. After three or four days of doing that, we started to make arrangements. We called the manufacturer down. We asked them to come look at it, and that's after our team had trouble shot the thing. They were about two to three weeks out. They came back out on October 7th, and we went through. They discovered, they thought, that boiler number one had a bad sensor in the harness, the sensor on the harness was bad. They replaced that, brought everything back online, and it still didn't work. So they went back in and installed the BMK 4000 maintenance kits on every one of the units to kind of freshen them back up. Mind you, these units are two years old, and so it's just kind of a freshen up. They're recommended to be dealt with every year. So we kind of refreshed them up, cleaned them back out, got them ready to go. We still had a problem. Then we ended up replacing the auxiliary limit connectors for each one. That did a big trick, and while doing that, they found a connection that was tied back on the previous phase, and there was really just a small electrical current that was hitting boiler number one that was getting it to read funny. And so after they did that, they found that problem. All of a sudden, the harness in boiler number one was fine, and they realized the original boiler harness was okay. So they switched that back out, put the original boiler harness back in it, and they ran like champs for 19 days straight. No issues. They conked out this morning.
No.
I'm not kidding. They conked out this morning. We've had guys there working on it all day.
They knew you were coming.
I know. It was just like, I was ready to do this big lab. We're so awesome.
Yeah, we figured so.
And then they done. So they've been working on it this morning. Boiler three and boiler four are back on. That means we have plenty of heat for the building. The system can run on one boiler, two is a supplementary to it, so two out of the four is still great. However, we're going to be monitoring that again. I don't have an update if one and two are running yet, but 10 minutes before this meeting started, I was out in the parking lot going, "Do we have one and two yet?" The answer is, "No, we don't." So we'll be checking that again tomorrow. We'll get to the bottom of it and solve why they're going off, but we'll have the basement pretty much wrangled.
Question on the boilers.
Go ahead.
Do they have a warranty?
Yeah.
So how long does that...
They're within the warranty period. They're five years. So let's go upstairs to the cafeteria. When we were in the cafeteria last time, we had just finished basically the last pier. In the cafeteria, after we had drilled all the piers, we removed the center floor. There was a big crack in that existing floor slab. We removed that, replaced that. You saw a good portion of the framing that had been going on at that time. The floor is in. Now the framing is essentially complete, and why don't we go to the next slide, Josh? So now you're seeing it. This is as of today. The drywall's hung now. We've started to tape in those places. All the mechanical above the ceiling is now done. All the mechanical in the walls is done. All the electrical in the walls is done. So they'll finish out the last little pieces of that next week in preparation to go towards finishes in that space. So we're already talking finishes in that area. So taping is ongoing. The door frames are installed, the kitchen drains. I went and met with the kitchen staff, talked with them about the drains. If you remember, we are on a suspended slab, which does not give us an option to slope the floor. I've met with the tile contractor, brought him in. We have worked out a system where we can get a small slope to the floor and give you drains. I met with the kitchen staff about that. They're happy with where we're going to put those, so we're going to move forward with that information, and the tile will be arriving next week. So it'll come in, it'll arrive at the dock at Salt Lake. We'll probably start the week after. But we have here the tile. Everything's here. We're going to be ready to go. To give you an idea, Josh is going to drop it and go into 360s. This is what we were trying to get last week that just didn't work very well, or last month, and so you kind of spin around inside the space and kind of look. The glass rock is what you're reading. That is where ceramic tile will go, the porcelain, excuse me, on the wall. And so you're inside the kitchen area there. This is the cafeteria area out in the main room. You can see the skylights are there. They're in. Now you're facing directly east. We have a better picture of that on the outside, but we're waiting for the glass and storefront material to arrive. But again, the space is ready. We are a week away from painting. We're that close. And then we're talking, start putting in the grid for the ceilings. It's moving right along. The wall that you see with the insulation is my barrier wall between me and the students like we talked last time. So that's kind of the main form of the cafeteria. Josh is going to drop back out and go into presentation mode and go to the next slide. And so we're going to talk about the exterior. Let's move forward with that. So last time, we had the roof tore off. We had, if you remember, the bags of asbestos, quite frankly, that was up on top. It was being disposed of at the time. The roof is now completed. It's 100% back on. We've got the gas line restored. You can see all your mechanical units are on. Those are already connected to everything on the underside when I said the rough end is complete. All that stuff is already there and ready to go on the underside of the building. We've got another good picture of this, but this is the east-facing wall that will be exposed right there. So we've taken it from what you see here. This is back when we put the piers in, and now we've brought that back in and added the stem wall, and the intent was is that when the new windows come through, we will take that line and it will match right on top of that frame and re-clean and through, so we carry that look all the way through that end. Another thing that had happened that was kind of a surprise to us, we found that this area right here had a lot of, it was framed with wood, which is no longer meets the code, so we had to turn that off and put that back on. That was a little bit of a surprise to us, but obviously we've already got that done. So the future plans and designs, let's start talking. Before we do, are there any other questions with the current project?
When do we anticipate it being finished?
Right now, we're scheduled for May 9th, and we're nine days ahead of that. And we're supposed to be July.
I like it.
Okay? So that's how that's going. Let's go to the next slide there. Phase three, for anyone, or the next phase, for anyone that's not familiar, we discussed this last month. Our first phase going into the next, this next portion, we will do the auditorium and the, each CTE wing with the van and choral areas. Okay? That's where we're going to primarily focus first. Then we will move, secondly, to tearing off the auditorium and removing the existing administration wing, and then we'll replace that, put that back in, and give a new parent drop-off lane at that point. We will switch a couple of years later, and we will drop into Phase Three. That will pull off the, what's the name of it? I can't think of it. Special education area. We'll pull that area down and then replace that, put it in the parking lot, that kind of thing. That entire duration is from January of '26 to December of '29. So that's kind of what that looks like. In preparation for that, since we have last met, Westland Construction put together a constructability report on the design drawings, and we gave that information to Devon a month or so ago. She's had that. The constructability report is basically, as we receive information from the architect, we are reviewing his drawings, and we're putting that out not only to subcontractors to look and to help us with ongoing pricing, but we're also looking about how does this go together, right? So we're looking at that type of stuff. And so we give that report to them. That helps them tone down their plans, so we understand what the intent is or asking for more information, so our guys don't have those questions that slow down projects. So the plans will be released for us to put out to the public on November 26th. The actual bid date is December 18th. We'll bid the project on that date, and from there, we will move forward with getting you the final numbers at that point, and we'll just chug along with the next phase. The other thing that we've been working on, Josh has been helping, we're going to kind of, we're going to kind of give you a little idea. Typically, when you guys see schedules, you are seeing this very clean Gantt chart that just shows everything working its way down. It's nice and neat, a little more old school, and this school demands that we think these processes through outside of what your typical scheduling would be. And so I'm going to show you a way that we did it 30 years ago, and we're going to kind of roll this out. We better not roll across the table, but let's go this way. And so these are critical path activities that take us for the four years. Each activity is labeled. It's by area, and as you see, the red is indicating that's our critical path. This is not complete. We are still working our way through this. We've been bruising our brains on Fridays, is what we've typically been doing, to try to work our way through this every Friday, and we've spent the last month and a half trying to think our way through these processes. Within the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a finished Gantt chart with all our activities that kind of show us what we've got going, but it's kind of the work that you guys don't see this behind the scenes, that we kind of wanted to just kind of show you a little bit about and how we do that. So you want to take that? Do you guys have any questions for us on the next phases, and if there's anything we can help you with, we want you to know we will?
That was awesome. So does anyone have a question?
Do we need to order any elevators now?
No. No, I'm aware of the elevator problem at this road. So elevators are on the schedule.
Okay.
It's in the critical path.
Probably back a few circles.
But the elevator that's required is in the very last piece, in the last six months of the building.
2029.
Yes, it installs in '29, and it's like December of '29. It's literally the last thing. That elevator is currently in a position right where it ties into the main gym, and so it's right on that corner, and we actually have to remove a piece of it to create the space to build the elevator pit in this staircase to go up with it. So it's an unfortunate position. I will have the elevator sitting on site in a Conex box a year in advance.
Thank you.
Promise.
Trent, thank you for such a detailed report. Love seeing your plans.
With visual aid.
As well.
We know the audience.
Nobody needs a paperweight, right?
Meaning in November or December.
This has got some beef in it.
I'll check.
Bookshelf.
So.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is item number six, and this is regarding our Wasatch wall. We have a large purchase request, and we've got some plans ready to go, and how do you like?
So I'll turn most of the time over to Hogan and IGEES. First of all, I want to commend Hogan and IGEES for all their super hard work on this and coordinating with three different engineers and all of the different principals, and this process has been really challenging, but they have done an awesome job coming up with a solution that all of the engineers have agreed to. They've taken on a lot of the cost themselves trying to get this fixed, and so just from us, we really appreciate all the work. They'll come up and talk about the plan and some of the things that they'll work on afterwards. So kind of the path, I guess, is more of the...
Hi.
Let's see. As Devon said, my name's Chris Hogan, President of Hogan Construction. This is Tyler Lorscher from IGEES. First, as Devon mentioned, I don't know, it can get confusing with so many entities and acronyms and names of everybody, so I just kind of made a little cheat sheet.
Perfect.
Maybe that will help as we talk about things. So we have involved with this, we have three different geotechnical engineers, and, oh, by the way, that's listed in the order that they were engaged in the project, so it's more of a chronological order. AGEC is the prime geotechnical contractor with the district. IGEES is the wall designer, and Tyler's the principal designer there. And then Langen was retained by the district also as a consultant. Of course, Hogan's the prime contractor. HADCO is the subcontractor, the civil subcontractor in charge of the site, and under them is the wall contractor, you know, contracted through HADCO. So it's a little bit convoluted, but that's kind of the who's who.
And just the context on that, that subcontractor that actually built the wall is in the process of dissolving.
Yeah.
Or 70.
Yes.
70 is...
That's added a little bit of complexity to the process.
Right.
So it's continued.
Yeah, John was telling us about that yesterday. So that just adds, you know, adds to the complexity. Also, Tyler and I were talking, we thought, kind of before we get going, it might be helpful too, there's a lot of technical terms and definitions. Maybe it's helpful to visualize a few things.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I apologize, I probably didn't bring enough copies.
We could share.
This is a drawing. I updated it slightly today. I don't know if you guys want to pass that down, but this is a drawing that I produced earlier this year in April. I've tweaked it a little bit, but this just shows the proposed reconstruction of the retaining wall, including the chimney drain and blanket drains. What I've included now that was not included earlier was an impermeable membrane up at the top of the wall. That was in our report, however, I just didn't include it on this initial reconstruction detail.
Just to orient you on that, if you were to take a great big knife and cut right through the wall and then stand back and look at the side of it, that's what you're looking at.
Yes.
Is a cut through the wall.
Yes.
So it kind of shows the face of the wall, what's behind it.
And if that helps, this is a sample of GeoGrid reinforcement. That's what I have shown is the red lines on my detail. What this does is this connects to the block face and extends back behind the block and interlocks with the sand and gravel back there. This is essentially what holds up the retaining wall. This is what's doing the majority of the work. If you want to, I can pass that around if you guys want to see that. This is...
So those come in big rolls?
Yeah, big 12-foot wide rolls, 200 feet long. They roll it out to whatever length we need, and then they'll cut it. This is non-woven fabric. It's kind of like a heavy-duty felt material. What this is, is this is the green lines on my drawing. This is what will separate the gravel drain from the retained soils and the reinforced soils. The purpose of this is it will let water drain through it, but it won't let dirt drain through it. So the idea is that it's going to keep the gravel clean and reliably draining consistently. So if you guys want, I mean, essentially, that's just really heavy-duty cloth. And this is something separate, but I thought it was a good little piece, I don't know what word, but good visual, yeah. Essentially, these are 3D blocks of the retaining wall that we 3D printed, and essentially, that's what this GeoGrid is, is it slaps in between these blocks, and they stack the blocks on top of it, and then this extends back, and you can see with the holes, you're going to just get a lot of interlocking with dirt and rocks and things like that.
And will backfill be placed between the GeoGrid layers?
Yes, yes.
So those blocks are two feet tall, so basically every two feet, you have a layer of the GeoGrid with backfill compacted on top, and then another layer, and then more backfill and another layer.
And there's an additional GeoGrid even installed also, correct?
Yes, yes. So the GeoGrid initially had minimum lengths, and we are meeting those minimum length requirements still, and you can see I have those callouts. It was 17 feet for the lower tier and 14 feet for the upper tier. However, as of right now, they are about 21 feet, and they still have a few more courses to go up for wall one. They are basically extending the grid all the way to this soil cut, so they are lengthening the grid as they're going up. So yeah, we're adding more GeoGrid as we're reconstructing.
Any questions on that before we go on? Thought of Mike, as we talk about the path forward, that just may help visualize, you know, kind of what we're talking about. So two weeks ago, the status was, we had a, kind of the plan that we were working on, we as the whole team, but we didn't, we were still trying to work together with all the engineers, you know, asking questions and kind of coming to a consensus of what the right path forward was. So I shared the two-step process that we were working through and considering. Now, I'm happy to say, as of yesterday, the engineers have, you know, agreed on this path forward, support this path, so they're still, the final report is still being tweaked a little bit, so we don't have that for tonight, but the agreement is, you know, all in place. So it's basically to rebuild, continue rebuilding the wall, just as Tyler was explaining, with the GeoGrid, going back further with the new drainage. Did we say what the drainage was on that drawing? I don't know if we called that out.
The chimney drain?
Yeah.
So yeah, I do have callouts to the chimney drain. I'm just calling, you know...
Yeah, so what we've been calling, the blanket drain, is the part under, you know, under the whole thing.
I do have other photos, if this helps, of the existing site. So this photo, I have a couple of these if you guys want to pass it around. This is a photo of the blanket drain below that reinforced zone. So this is at the very bottom, so they laid that fabric down at the bottom and then put about a foot or two of gravel below everything, and then we have a whole bunch of pipes that, it's kind of hard to tell, there's a pipe daylighting out right now, and you can go see that now, today, but there's a whole system of pipes that connect and link to that, and that will eventually get tied directly into the storm drain system. So if you want, there's several pictures there if you guys want to pass that around. This is a photo pretty close to the elevation the wall is right now of what that blanket drain looks like. It doesn't look perfectly straight vertical, kind of like what I've shown it, but essentially as they go up, they'll do it in one-foot increments of making sure that fabric is on either side of that drainage gravel. And then maybe one more that just kind of helps show, I guess, two more.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this gravel is around this corner, right? It's not like extended...
No, it does not go in front of the wall.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it's only behind it. This photo, I included this one just to show that that fabric was on top of that blanket drain at the very bottom of the wall. This was all done back in March and April, or mostly April, I believe, no. And then... And then, this is a pretty good photo of the GeoGrid, just showing that extending back, kind of as I was showing in that drawing, and extending all the way back to the soil cut. If that helps.
So, as it sits right now, that wall has been reconstructed with all of this in place up to a couple of blocks below the top of the first, the lower wall. And so, the plan everybody's talked about now is to continue that, finish that first wall. It'll step back the 10 feet, I think it is, whatever that
Oh, for the next year.
For the next year.
It's nine feet base-to-base, yes.
Okay. And then, and then continue up with the same system, you know, from where it was down stacked on the east side around the corner to the north side. So, that's step one. Then, as I described last, two weeks ago, step two is to do additional borings, and you've determined that to be four.
Yes.
Four additional borings. Two on the, kind of the north side and two on the east side. And you want to
Yeah, I've got a Google Maps aerial photo, just kind of showing where I would like to put these borings, if that helps.
The purpose of these is to ascertain where the water is coming from more, and also, so, when, in soils, you know, soils vary tremendously, just naturally. And so, you know, many tests have been done already, and so, the engineers have taken that data and done a tremendous amount of calculations over the last month, or so, you know, a couple, several weeks, to try to model the variability of that soil and what happens in different situations. And so, that's been very complicated, very technical. And so, the high confidence is with the wall that's there, and the improvements, you know, for the water is adequate, is great. What's not known, and still the question, is do we need to take that any further, right? And so, that's what they've been trying to model and trying to analyze. And so, these additional bore holes will help know about water, and you're also taking more soil samples to get more data about the variability of the soil to try to narrow that gap, you know, that width of data and understanding of what the soils are there, which will then inform what needs to happen, if anything, beyond that. Is that a good summary?
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty good.
Can I ask a question about this?
Of course.
So, these are additional bore holes, right? Where are the ones we currently have, so I can picture that?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have those marked on here.
Well, that's okay, I was curious.
I don't know the exact location off the top of my head, but there's, I believe, four of them just along here.
Along there.
So, that's why I don't feel like there's any need to do any more in this area.
I just didn't, I wasn't sure.
I think there's three.
Is it just three? Okay.
So, as, I just want to check my understanding.
Yeah.
As, like, if that soil were to become really saturated from just a runoff or whatever, you would kind of get that information before it weakened the soil and potentially moved soil in some way?
Yes.
That would help, pipes not separate?
That's the idea of these additional borings, is to identify that water before it becomes an issue. So, these will be checked regularly. The pyesometers as of right now that are in place are showing no evidence of any water right now, so completely unsaturated conditions. And so, the idea is that if it is from a runoff source, those pyesometers over on the east side between the school and Oakmont, we would see water there before it ever got to the west side of the school, is the idea.
And then, I got the answer from Devin, but
Before you jump on that too, just on that east side, if those do show water, you know, at some point, it's much easier to put a cutoff drain there.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Yes.
Just because, I was asking me, like, well, what do you do once you have that in there? You just know it's coming? And I was like, I don't know. And then, what's the solution? There is a way to then drain that and get that soil
It's going to be much easier to go in there and dig a cutoff trench on the east side than it would be to do something behind the wall.
If needed, right, okay.
And there's a storm drain already over there?
Which is tied into.
Yeah, just tied into.
Yes.
In addition, Tyler mentioned the impermeable layer, just under the landscape at the top of the wall, to keep water, you know, surface water, whatever, from going into there. In addition to that, we were talking yesterday about regrading, since the parking lot's torn up anyway, we should regrade it so it slopes away from the wall, you know, more to the middle. So, we'll be doing that as well, and while it's torn up, we can shift the storm drain further to the north as well. So, just while we're there, might as well do that, and
So, move it kind of beyond where the wall is, is that
Yeah, just take it further away.
Okay.
So, if they're, I mean, that's really not necessary, but since we're in there
Sure.
Doing all that work anyway, you know, we just might as well improve it.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Is it your opinion that the separation of the pipes is because the soil shifted, or
That's what I believe happened.
Right, like it got so saturated that, okay.
Yes, because the first evidence of movement we saw was that upper tier settled, probably about seven to 12 inches, is what we saw. And it was about a couple of days after that that we actually excavated down and saw that the storm drain like it separated because of that. Because the storm drain box was within that zone that it settled.
Okay, I'm just curious.
But there's also a suggestion to add more concrete
Yes.
Over in those areas.
Yes.
So, that there's not a temptation to pile snow over there. Plus, we will give very specific instructions to the custodial staff.
It's all about trying to mitigate, right? That impermeable layer is a mitigation effort. Hopefully, water never even gets to that point. The concrete is another mitigation effort, and that would be sloped to drain back to the curb and gutter. But yes, ultimately, hopefully, no one ever piles snow there ever again to begin with, right? But, yes.
Let's see, so, so we're talking about part two, you know, with the additional borings and monitoring, and then that will inform us, you know, the team on what needs to happen, if anything. We just don't have that information yet, so this will, this will help that.
We'll be able to react a lot faster, and IGES will be doing those readings.
I was just going to ask
Yes. So, I believe the ones that Langen placed, you'll have access to
We'll have to get with them and make sure we know where they are.
And so, they can read all of the pyesometers on a fairly regular basis, especially in that, you know, that snowmelt type, so.
I know there was some discussion among engineers whether pyesometers or whether, like, a well that lets all the water, that's the way to determine, have you guys resolved that?
We haven't resolved it entirely yet. We have time to make that decision fully. I do believe the wells is probably the likely direction that we'll go, but, yes. And kind of on that note, I was looking ahead at scheduling to try and figure out when we could do these borings. The first working day that it looks like that the school is not in session, it looks like you guys don't have school Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that's the 25th. We, I would like to try to have access to the roadway in front of the school to do those borings on that day if possible, and it's probably going to be two to three days of drilling. And so, ideally, maybe that Tuesday or Monday before we could start on the east side. And where we're over on the east side, I would hope that that's maybe not disruptible to any of the school functions at that point. And then, maybe Wednesday when school's not in session, we could do the west side. If you guys have any issues with that, let me know, but that's
And we'll, obviously, we'll coordinate that
Yes.
With the school, but just so you're
That's kind of what I'm thinking as of right now of our best window to do this work, yes.
So, that's kind of the plan. You know, I think, I'm assuming you all got the proposed cost situation. Our request is to be able to proceed, at least with part one, as soon as possible, before the weather gets, you know, real bad.
And HADCO, yesterday after the engineers have all agreed, he called his crew and are ready to mobilize as soon as we have the
They're ready to go as soon as we can.
Okay.
I did want to say one other thing. So, on those, on those costs, if you've seen that paper, we put a not-to-exceed amount. Really, our intent is whatever the actual cost is, just the raw cost, right? Not, no soft cost, just the hard, actual cost. So, that means Tyler and IGES, you know, their labor and time and everything is just being absorbed. Our management and, you know, and just all of the, all the soft costs of management and meetings and helping, that's probably around $300,000 range. That's not, not even mentioned, you know, in those documents, so. Our intent is to share that, just the raw cost.
Thank you for working with us. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to echo, before I'm done, I just want to echo what Devin said, that this is a very difficult situation, and the whole team has worked together really well. You know, it's not, it's not easy, so I just, I just want to compliment, you know, everybody, the engineers, the district, and HADCO, just, you know, keeping a cool head and just working through everything proactively, so.
And I think everybody's main concern, and I really do believe this of all of, of everyone, is they want to get the wall built, and they want to make sure it's built well and not leave it any longer. So, that's really our focus.
So, can I will be
Other questions?
Going on the large purchase request to pay for this? Does anyone have any questions while we have these expert?
Yes, yes.
I just have a quick question. Between the layers, you want them compacted?
Yes, yes.
Back?
Yeah. Yeah, the specifications contained in the original retaining wall design, that's what we recommended to be followed again.
Good question. Anything else?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all this.
Of course, yes.
All right.
If you guys want, I'll find either way. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On to agenda, item number seven, and it's time for the audit report.
This is the
Thank you.
I'll send you a text. So, this is the most exciting day of my whole year.
Finance fun with Devin.
Yeah, this is, actually, it's going to be finance fun with Kyle and Trey today.
Oh, good.
So, our new auditors are here to present our audit today. We have Kyle Green, Trey Johansson. I wanted to say Johnson, but I knew that wasn't right. So, they're here, and they will report on how the audit went, the compliance and single audit, and all of that stuff. You guys all received the act for on Friday. That was pretty exciting, but I, we won't go into a lot of detail. I feel like it's probably the most boring day of your guys' year if you get to tip my week out through all of the numbers. So, they're just going to talk about the audit and some of the compliance stuff. So, you guys are up, and which one do you want to do first? I'll have Bonnie bring it up.
You can do the second one, the bottom one.
Awesome.
I'm not sure how to get up at this Thank you. Yeah, as Devin said, most exciting for us, it hurts my heart a little bit to hear it's boring to you, but
No, that's fine. She's rejecting her.
That is, that's the reality. It's okay. My kids let me know all the time that I'm boring and not fun, so it's okay. All right, so the audit, so just briefly, this year's a little bit unique in that, just a quick, high-level, there's a federal document called the Compliance Supplement that has to come out for us to, that's what we officially test and do our federal program testing too. That typically gets released in July, maybe August at the latest. That did not get issued, and due to the shutdown, it is anybody's guess as to when that is going to be issued. So, the act for that you guys got on Friday, and what you'll see here, this little draft, we have not officially issued the financial statements because of that. We're waiting for that just to make sure there's no changes. We have a draft, we don't anticipate changes. We think this act for that you guys saw is going to be final, but until all the dominoes fall, we can't officially say final, final. Okay? So, just so you know, if you're seeing the same draft, or when you looked in the act for and you didn't see the auditor's report, that's, that's why. But within the audit report, so our job again is to come in, test the balances, confirm balances, look at controls, all of those things, to make sure that the balances in the act for are what we use materially correct, right? So, not an absolute assurance, we don't test everything down to the penny, but we're making sure that we materially test that. And then ultimately, issue an opinion whether that's done properly or not. And so, our opinion, in the second little paragraph, will say, "The company financial statements present fairly in all material respects." Also referred to as an unmodified opinion, so a clean opinion on the financial statements is what we're anticipating. So, the balances that you saw, I believe there was a finance committee meeting on Friday that you guys went through. For those that are a part of that, that saw that, those are good numbers. Those have been tested, those have been audited. Those represent your balances, either as of June 30th, if it's a kind of a balance sheet thing, or the activity for the year. Okay? One thing on this to note that might be a little bit new, just right there, that emphasis of matter, it's simply just highlighting, so there's, again, GASB is the standing, standard-setting body that sets all the new rules. They had a new one related to compensated absences that Devin and her team worked through. Ultimately, that created a restatement on your financials. Its impact was on the government-wide or full accrual, so it didn't impact any of your funds or necessarily what you would be budgeting for year in and year out, but it's on those full accrual. Okay? So, that was that one, and then there were, with the switch, a couple of other restatements that did happen related to just your kind of timing recognition of your revenue and the state grants. Before, those were put down in fund balance, as restricted fund balance, and we've moved them up on the balance sheet to unearned revenue. Again, more a timing of when we recognize that revenue, okay? And then, there was another full accrual adjustment related to property taxes and how those get recognized between the two different, your fund accounting and your full accrual accounting. Okay? If you have any questions, Devin understands, I can help answer as well. But those were some of the adjustments that were made, okay? Anything there? Okay. So, issuing, or anticipating issuing a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, the rest of this is just language, so we probably won't go too much more on that. If you'll pull up, are you driving? Sorry, who's driving?
Bonnie.
Bonnie in the back, okay. You were touching, so they go, okay. Bonnie, if you'd go to the other one, the compliance one, we'll go through. So, and I'm just going to highlight kind of our reports. Again, the act for really is yours, right? So, those are your financials, your numbers. If you have questions, I'm more than willing to try to tackle that, and for sure, Devin, Devin knows this, those are your balances. But I'm just going to go over what are our reports. So, this would be the compliance, this will be your federal and your state compliance and control compliance. Won't spend a lot of time, the first page is the CFA, which is all of the federal dollars you get. Won't spend there, but within here, so we're required to test different programs. Those typically rotate through. So, for you guys to be aware, we tested the child nutrition cluster this year and the special education cluster this year for federal compliance. No compliance findings or matters to bring forward. So, everything that needed to test was tested, and you had everything in place and going through the right processes and controls. Again, potentially subject to change, just in that we might have to do additional testing. I wouldn't anticipate that there's nothing there you haven't done, but that compliance supplement might say that we need to test something else that we haven't tested, and so we'll just have to tackle that when we get there, but don't anticipate issues, okay? So, we did test those, so, yeah, if you scroll down, those are the notes to the CFA, so we'll keep going. So, this one, this report talks about our, it's the report required for government auditing standards, which talks about controls. So, as I mentioned, there was a few adjustments to the financial statements. Due to that, if you scroll down just a little bit, right here, we have put in here that there would be a material weakness with the financial statements due to the impact of those numbers. What does that mean, right? That can be a scary word, deficiency can be a scary thing. For us, yes, this is the highest level of control we can get just because of the dollar magnitude, but those issues have been resolved and have already been corrected in the act for that you have in front of you. So, this isn't an ongoing issue. This isn't anything, for me, if I was in your position, repeat, this isn't something to keep me up at night. This isn't something that we don't have our arms around yet, and we need to identify new controls and new ways of doing things. This was a, an error in how something got changed in your financial statements from, again, from the fund, fund financial statements to the financial statements to the government-wide. And that error has been identified and corrected. And so that's how I would put that, is that it's not something that, like I said, it's not ongoing. It's been caught, it's been fixed, and we're done. But because of that, for audit standards, we have to use this ugly language and talk about material weakness. But questions on that? I just want to make, again, make sure that it's not, it doesn't give too much weight. We give enough weight to it that we understand, but not too much weight that we potentially panic in. Oh, no.
Can I just rephrase and make sure I understand it?
You bet.
So if I understand correctly, you're saying that the financial part didn't actually change, but just the way we needed to report it, into which fund or how we categorize it?
So the financials did, so the property tax issue that we're talking about, that was a $4 million switch.
Okay. So that's what we're saying.
But it was to the good. So it was $4 million of revenue I hadn't reported last year on the government-wide statement. So this is the statements that I always call the worst-case scenario. If the bottom were to fall out of every single state entity, this is the worst-case scenario. So it was $4 million that I hadn't recorded because they were delinquent taxes that we hadn't received yet. So those, it was, I'm not sure where it got off. It could have been last year, it could have been four years ago, but somewhere the dollar amount got off, and we just corrected it this year. So it was actually, it would have been better for me had I done it.
Almost like having a check that hasn't been cashed.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Like who hasn't done this?
You actually got $4 million more than what you said you did, but, or you are expecting to get $4 million more than you said you did.
And what you've been budgeting on.
These taxes we don't receive.
And what is the standard around reporting those taxes if they're not received yet?
We report them as revenue.
Even if they haven't been collected or counted?
Because it's still part of the revenue that we could receive.
Or the full accrual.
Right.
Right? There's two bases of accounting that you have to.
So it's the worst case or best case scenario. You know, in this case, it's the best case. We received that $4 million of delinquent tax.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. We can nerd out further if you want to dive into the numbers. I'm all in.
I'm all in.
I'm all in. Does that help? Did that answer your question? Great. Okay. Perfect. Okay. So that's that one. The next report is, I think, our uniform guidance report. I talked to, so that's federal, federal compliance. So I talked child nutrition, special ed. If you'll forward, go forward now to, I think it'll be page 12. Lots of words. This is more federal compliance stuff. Keep going down. One more right here. State compliance. That's the last report, I think, of ours. So state compliance, as you're aware, you have to go through a state compliance audit every year. State auditor, USB, comes up with what we're supposed to look at and test for you. So the items that we tested are, these indented here, starting with budgetary compliance down to these public education programs. These bottom two are, only LEAs have to deal with them. The rest of them are kind of all governments throughout, throughout have those same standards. But, so we tested each of those in their varying forms and requirements. And again, in our opinion, the district will have complied in all material respects with the state compliance report. So nothing that we need to note or report on for state compliance. So everything was done well there. So for me, just to take a quick step back, where's the district at? What's financial performance? I think you guys are doing well. Devin and her team are awesome. You guys know that. I don't think I necessarily have to tell you. I'd be preaching to the choir a little bit here, but Devin and her team's really awesome, have a great understanding of accounting and what needs to be recorded and how that needs to be recorded. And I think she's doing a really great job. You guys as a district are doing well. Just a couple of, you've got your economic stabilization, which is a positive thing to have that set aside. Again, that's the, you know, it can be used as a rainy day fund, right, or different things that are there. That's being set up. You have other commitments and assignments to show that you're, you have funds available to pay for some of the obligations that you guys have committed to your employees. So that's a very positive thing for you there. And then your unassigned fund balance ended the year, just in the general fund, ended just about 18.4 million, which is about 11% of your expenditures. I didn't ask, Devin, I can ask maybe, do you guys have a board, a target that you guys are trying to get to?
Same as the state auditor, about 20% is what we're looking at.
What you're trying to get to.
We're, I mean, we're good where we are. And when you count both assigned and on the side.
Oh, for sure.
That's what I generally count, is both of those, and that's, we're right around 18%.
Okay, I was going to say, yeah, if you count both of those, for sure. The unassigned, just the unassigned itself is 11, but you're there for sure, and those are, those are strong things to have. As you guys know, you need that money because some, most of your, most of your revenues don't come in until next month as you get your property taxes. So you have to have some of that reserves there to help continually pay for your five, five months of operations until those property taxes really start. And I understand that's a four-letter word right now, too, but as soon as those start to come in, you know, so you've got to have that, that reserve there. And so, so I think the district to say that you're in a strong financial position, too.
And those balances are also super helpful when we do bond ratings, which is one of the reasons we got such a good bond rating. Only thing that we actually have control over, the only thing that is a set of the bond rating is to increase everyone's salary in the city of Provo, and to add 10% more kids every single year. Those are the two pieces where we scored, you know, the lowest on, you know, economic situations in Provo. So.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Any other questions about the audit or the monitor?
Not just the district, I'm talking the entire city. Thanks, Kyle.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You made that one. It was so good.
Hey, I succeeded.
Yay.
Awesome. Okay, thank you, guys. If you're all right, we're gonna.
Yes.
No, we stick to you to the whole.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, next is item number eight, which is open enrollment. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Depp.
I'm Jason.
And Jason.
I'm Jason.
Good evening, school board. Thanks for the opportunity. We're going to just talk for a minute about open enrollment. We're at that time again this year. Every year, what we do is we look to see whether the schools are at 90% capacity. That's the, kind of the marker to say whether or not we would want to close a school to open enrollment. Right now, no, none of those schools do reach that marker. And so with that, we would recommend that we move to having all of our schools open. The open enrollment period starts November 15, you know, for this coming month, for this new school year. And this last year, we actually did a walkthrough of all of the sites with site maps to make sure that they were currently used, the rooms that we were going to were currently used as classrooms, you know, because from time to time, the sites change in how they use different locations. It could be a computer lab, that type of thing, and then that wouldn't count in the overall capacity report. We wanted to be as accurate as possible. So we use that same, those same groups of maps that we had walked the buildings from last year to come to this number this year. Any questions?
Are we closing specific grades in specific schools?
So when the grade does achieve that 90% capacity, then we would recommend closure at that school. We'd work with the administration on that at that point to see how they feel about, you know, those grades specifically. But we do get to that point where we look at class grade levels specifically.
Because third grade in Sunset View right now, and it's going to be fourth grade next year, that has those 90-plus kids, and it, there's going to be five teachers for that grade.
Yeah. And again, I think sometimes that all depends on whether or not the school, like another grade, has a much lower number, and the school could absorb a teacher from that grade to move up to help support it, and it would be able to stay within the 90% capacity. So those things are a little tricky depending on whether or not that room is available at the building.
The reason we kind of look at overall numbers is because we're looking at, do we actually have the classroom space if this number goes up to actually put an additional teacher? So just because a teacher is fluctuating from one grade level to the next, that's not as much what we worry about in this first period, because the first period is open until February, and then we're awarding FTE based on that. So the school will get the right FTE based on the number of individuals that we have at that point in time that are enrolled. So I don't anticipate that issue happening.
And then what we do is we check again with them as we get closer to school starting, because for all the kids who may have moved in, then these aren't necessarily open enrollment students. They're actual new growth to the school based on the actual boundary. We then check again with the school for their FTE. And like you mentioned, we leave it at the 90% because we can still be able to have that capacity to add a teacher at that point to help the school.
Oh, go ahead. I'm looking at the chart that's attached there, the capacity report. I don't know that I, we need to go over every line or anything, but if you could just kind of help us understand what this chart is showing us?
Yeah.
Because I am a little confused. Lakeview, it says the projected seats available for early enrollment this next year is negative one, and yet we're going to keep it open? So, and Tim View, I can't understand how we got 525 possible open seats.
Yeah, and a lot of this, again, is based on the overall number of classes at the school. And so the negative one value, I honestly, I'm not exactly sure. This, this report was given to me this afternoon, so I'm like you in that I started getting into it. For me, the green section was kind of the most helpful, the dark green section, where I was looking through that for our current maximum capacity. And so that's a great question on the negative one piece. I'd have to go back to student services and ask them a question about that.
I mean, like, let's say the projected counts, right? Like, that's where that number goes up.
Yeah.
I do have a question on that chart around, just, it doesn't have to be answered right now, but it says here, is that Provo peaks, it's negative 102 seats available for late enrollment?
Right.
So anyway, some of that, I'm not sure I understand what that means, but I'd assume that we have a space right now for those students. But if, if projected changes, so that's right now.
Well, I have a guess that that is actually program-related. It's related to the CAS program?
Yeah.
That it is both Sunset View and at Peaks, because if you look down at Sunset View, they have a negative 83.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so I think that's related to those programs specifically.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't see independence on here.
Oh, sorry. I wanted to ask, so if we close, like, based off specific grades of school, how about, is that different for DLI classrooms, specifically like the English, like, only classes?
So we have actual capacity numbers in policy for our DLI classes. We support actually going up higher in our DLI classes to try to account for attrition over time based on the fact that students may choose not to continue, and it's really hard to enter the program as you get older, right? And so, and we do have a lower capacity kind of expectation on the English side of that, mainly due to the fact that it's a, it's kind of a closed boundary situation at that point. And so we, we work on that year to year, but we do allow from time to time for there to be a lower number on the English side than we would normally say is kind of something we feel comfortable with. And that's usually just based, again, on, for that boundary area during that time, that's the people who live there and have chosen the English for portion of the education.
Rachel, there's a cap at each grade level of 60.
Oh, okay.
Per language, per grade level, for DLI. Other question?
I don't see independence on here.
By application?
Well, I mean, like, the school has a capacity, it can only have so many, per fire code, you can only have so many people. So how many?
Because we don't have independence open for open enrollment. You can't go in and fill out an open enrollment application for independence. If you're going to independence, you have to go through your counselor of your boundary school, and so it's filtered through that. So this is for the capacity of a parent to fill out the open enrollment form online. So that's why it's not included in this.
Yeah. Their, their overall capacity is much higher than what the school currently holds. Ever since our change years, you know, it's been a number of years ago, I think it was about 2018, we tried to retool independence to be more of a positive environment for students rather than being something where it's like a disciplinary, you're sent there for, you know, and what Wendy was just mentioning, we work with students from freshmen on up to say, this is a, we're recommending that this would be a great option for you. You and your parents could explore further. And then they basically complete an application and work with the school on kind of getting in to some extent. We do recommend students go there from time to time, especially if their regular high school isn't really meeting their needs, and this setting might be better for them. But their capacity for the number of students that the school could hold is pretty, actually pretty low.
Are there any schools that were being considered, and maybe, like, that they're really close, to being close?
In the past, the school that's been the closest has been Tim View, and I think that due to the new construction, it's, it's one of the reasons why it's not as close as it has been in the past, is there are different teaching stations now available. But no, other than that, right now, there hadn't really been any. Tim and Ogas, we talked about it a lot as far as its overall space and capacity. The difficulty in this is that you, you end up with classes that aren't near that kind of 27 and a half number or 27 number at elementary, because, you know, it's hard to, those are all these averages that we're running, and so you'll end up with classes of 20, 21, and then all of a sudden, a class of 30 here. And when you average it all out, it, it still stays under the 90%, even though it doesn't feel as comfortable as you'd want it to be because there's a large number of actual classrooms or classes in the school.
So in that case, you'd leave the school open, but certain grade levels would be closed, that some grade levels that are really low would be open.
And that's where we're getting the 525 open seats at Tim View. That seems extremely high.
Yeah, again, I think.
Right, current history.
No, that's, that's a projection. It's 525.
And I think Tim View is always an interesting thing because there are so many kids of choice to us at Tim View. So if it's only the kids coming up from Centennial that are rolling into Tim View, that can make that number look a lot bigger than it would be, based on the fact that we do accept so many kids for open enrollment at the location that are kind of out of boundary. And those kids could just be from across town, right?
So my question, if you look at Tim View's numbers on the bottom, so as of this year, it says that we're full by three over, that there's three seats available, because the 90% number is 2255.
Right.
And our projection is 2322. So that seems higher.
And they started, right, they, they actually, to your point about it being full now, they started working with them in July about being full, and working with Mooney about accepting students, and it was mainly on different, again, grade levels, like ninth grade was full, or, you know, that type of thing. And so the projection for this next year, again, part of this, with it being under construction, I'm not sure if that's impacted some of the available spaces, or, you know, I would have to ask more questions of student services on that.
So adjusted capacity here is high or low?
So I know.
I know because one grade.
So let me explain something. So when it's saying, for example, that the projected count is 2322, right, for the 26, 27 school year, notice, when it's talking about it has 525 seats, that's also including those kids that are coming in through that open enrollment period. And so it's not that it's 2322 plus 525, that's not what that number is stating. That's not how I read that. So I read it as that I'm looking at, right now, I've got 2252.
So I read it as that I'm looking at, right now, I've got 2252 sitting in that and I have, and it's full. If my capacity is sitting for early open enrollment is 90%, my capacity is 2506. You're right, I don't know where that 525 number is coming from, so yeah.
But it's, that says max capacity 2847.
Yeah, but that's not.
But we're not even.
You gotta look at the 2506 number, because that's, that's the 90%.
The 90%, so our 90% number is 2255 and our projection is 2322, doesn't that say that we're over 90%?
Yes.
That's why I'm confused.
Okay, this is what I, this is what I'm going to recommend is that we need to take this back to Student Services and then we'll bring it back to November.
Are you seeing something else, Carol?
So the 2847, I'm just doing the math really quick, and I had minus 525 equals the 2253. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But then why are we going with that higher number looking at it for this close? I guess I just need more information.
I think they're projecting 500 permits, maybe not.
Right, but the question is then, how many kids are choicing out? Because that's what that number is not including. So if there's over 100 kids that are choicing out, that projected live within that boundary, I don't know where that number is lying. So I, I think we just need to go back to Jason and have them come back in November.
Can I, who sets the 90%? State set that?
No, the state does. That's in state code. Because we'll still have time to do it before it opens on November 15th, so.
Yeah, November 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are moving on to item number nine. So at our last board meeting, we approved with the Dixon site, we're going to be building an elementary school there and moving our Tempanogus students, teachers over to that site. And so now we need to talk about the timing of that, so we'll turn that over to Debra.
So the, what we will plan on doing, and this is really looking for guidance from the board as well, is what's called an RSOQ. And an RSOQ is a request for statement of qualifications, because we all love acumen. So instead of a RFP, which is typical when you're buying like goods, that's a request, request for proposals. What we can do differently on the request for statement of qualifications is review people's qualifications and then negotiate with them outside of that. So we can look at the, we'll do the architect first. Our team will be working quite a bit over the next few months on making sure easements are taken care of. There's an old gas line that is marked as an easement that is abandoned. So there's those, those kinds of things on that site that we will work with on getting that cleaned up so that once we start, we can get going fairly quickly. So the thought right now is to release that, our SOQ documentation in December. We'll have a couple of members of the board and cabinet and a couple of, and just to review the proposals for this, our SOQ. And then our purchasing person will go and negotiate a percentage, because the architect is always based on a percentage of the total construction cost. So that will be the first thing. And that, right now, my thought was December to have them in place for the beginning of the year. We can wait. I, I just know there's a lot of people that now that we've made the decision want there to be a school already. And so we have a little bit of time. Boys and Girls Club is still using Dixon for the time being. They're building us now, we push it off to March or April. And so we wouldn't be able to start any of that. The contractor and the architect would then manage the demolition.
March and April, what, 26?
26, just this coming up, so it's, it's coming up pretty quick. But we can still work on the plans. We'll do something very similar to what we've done with that Tim View and with the weekly meetings that we go through ideas and some of the community needs and try to put some of those in place. And that's what the architect will do, so.
And we still need to use the kitchen for Tim View, right?
The kitchen for Tim View, yes. Nothing will happen on that site until the end of May. Currently, we have some old kitchen equipment in the building. There's been some, some interest in some of the old stuff that's not being used for selling. Some of those have been put up or will be in the next day or two be put on public surplus. There's been a couple of charter schools that have expressed interest, which there is, we talked about a bill today in our meetings about surplus schools and equipment will be offered to charter schools at first, so.
It's a bill, it's a proposal.
Sorry, a proposal for a bill.
That the legislature is putting forward. So you're saying we already have charter schools that are buying?
Well, they are interested. Right now, our, right now, our policy is to put it on public surplus. And then we can send that site to the charter school and they can, they can put on it. So it's still the same end result. So is there any questions or input that everyone has?
Gina?
So the RSOQ is going to be for, because what I'm hearing is the first phase is basically demolition of the old building and then gas lines and things like that that aren't, so getting the site ready to be built on. And then the next phase is then actually building something on the site. So is the RSOQ for both of those things?
The RSOQ will be for architect services. Then we will do an RSOQ or an RFP for the CMGC contractor. And they, the, the way that we've done it, we selected Westland from the Tim View project and VCBO. Westland and VCBO are in those weekly meetings from the very beginning to climate. And what that does is that creates a really cohesive way of planning around certain things that somebody may think of later. You know, if you start with an architect and then you bring a contractor and it's saying, that's not going to work, you know, or we need to do this differently. And so having them both in place from the beginning is really the best way to go, so.
So this just gets everything in place?
This gets everything in place so we can start the plans for the building before we even start demolition. We can start actually planning what our needs are, what we want, what we want it to look like, you know, any input that we, that we want to get community wise. After that, those plans are done, my idea is probably having a couple of different ideas for the exterior and having community meetings where we can get input and before we get to the spot where we have design drawings. Because once you get design drawings, you can't go back and change everything. So I, I would really like it to be a really cohesive whole process where we have input from board members, community members, because I know that site means a lot for the community.
So the, okay, we're just going to ask, go ahead, please.
And the timing then in terms of when different funds are needed would be? We currently have the funds from the bond that we just sold, right?
Correct.
For, for going through this process to get an architect and our contractor in place and getting through the planning phase. And then talk to me again about the timeline and the money to do the project.
So once, so a lot of that is kind of tipping on the December 18th thing. December 18th is when we get hard bids for the Tim View phase. So once I know what that's going to look like and how much, if we have to use fund balance along with the bond proceeds or what that looks like, then we can make a recommendation of let's use the, our, our funds first that we have available before we go and ask the public for the money. Because I, I, I want to make sure that we're really mindful of that and using the dollars that we do have available, but also leaving ourselves with enough to be able to, to deal with all the ongoing needs that we have. And so once we have those numbers in December, then I'll have a much better idea of what the funding timing will look like. But once we put everything in place and start the planning phase, the expenses at that point will be the demolition and the percentage of the architect. That a lot of the, like the demolition contractor will work through our contractors. It'll have billings for those things as we go. The thought is to, to have everything ready, hopefully by next fall and be able to do the bid and start the build and have everything up. I mean, in my perfect world, we'd have the school open by fall of 2028.
And then does that mean we have time to figure out exactly how and when we're going to?
We have lots of time. Not lots of time. We all know how long buildings take.
We have sufficient time and they start the project.
Right, yep.
Is the December 18th kind of Tim View cost estimate or proposal for all through the end of phase three, right?
Yep, that will be to the very end of the project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other question? Comments, guidance?
Yeah, do we want to talk about if we want to expand this parent program at Tempanogus? Like, right now, there's one class. Why not have two?
I mean, two by two?
Yeah.
I think that's what we will talk about as we get.
I'll be part of the programming phase, because that's one of the first things that the architect will do is they'll go, what are your needs? And that will be where we will decide, are we going to expand anything? Are we, what, what is our goal with the, with the program?
All right, so I haven't heard anyone expressing that they're not comfortable with the plan that was laid out. Am I reading that right?
So we'll, we'll start putting that together and get it released. We'll see about timing with Christmas break. It's a little bit tricky, but I, I also know that we'll have some good proposals.
Thank you.
For working on this.
Thank you. Okay, item number 10 is, Devin, it's just your night tonight here, so.
Well, you know, it's so exciting. So this is for, and you know, Chad's here, so I'm going to let him speak to any questions that anybody might have. These are for updates to the Provo High auditorium sound system. So just a brief, Chad can give you all the details, but there was the equipment that, oh, you are still here. Everybody was looking behind the door to make sure that we were actually still here. When the equipment was purchased during the build, this was now almost 15 years ago, because it was purchased before the build started so that we could get, make sure everything was in, in place. And so some of that equipment has become obsolete. The, the equipment currently is not made anymore. So Chad is doing his best to find duct tape everywhere to, to make it work. He's at the point now where there isn't any more duct tape to make it work. And so he's just the update. So do you have any questions specific or do you want him to explain it much better than I can? Why don't you explain, Chad?
So part of the auditorium upgrade we did recently, we replaced all of their microphone systems, the wireless systems. They actually ended up bringing a bunch from the old Provo High into the new Provo High. And those, those frequencies are becoming legal. Sorry to the public.
I want everybody to see your face.
Okay, so, so we replaced a lot of that. We ended up replacing, replacing the soundboard that is there as well. So everything's kind of been replaced. What's happening now is we were trying to get some monitor speakers on the stage working, because right now they don't work. So for Kenny Weiser, for example, he does the stuff. He needs to have monitor speakers for the kids to hear themselves on the stage. So we have a problem with that. When we upgraded that, we can no longer connect to it.
Is this why when you stand on the stage, you can't hear yourself?
Yeah.
And this is going to fix it?
Yeah, this will fix it, but more importantly, but more importantly than that is, is, I don't know if you've noticed, when you go to Provo High, you can't actually just push buttons and make the screen come down. You can't turn the screen on. You can't run the microphones. You can't do any of it. They have to get their AV tech down to the auditorium every time there's a performance or a show or any type of thing. They have to bring her down. She has to turn the system on. She has to give them the mics. She has to bring a screen in because there isn't a screen. There was one originally and it was in their waste. They took it down and threw it under the stage and it became damaged. So that's another thing we're replacing. It'll be in front of the proscenium and come down and it'll all be controlled. But Kami's super excited because now she'll be able to walk in and go push a few buttons and be able to function. So that's another big component.
So this all, a lot of these features were not installed when we built?
They were installed. There was no touchscreen. There was no way to do a lot of that. So all of our newer schools like, let's see, so Shoreline, like the new, the new Tim View will have the same system. Provo will now. Centennial has the same system. So it's just one of those simple, I can't remember what they call it, but it's just, it's just simply just touch it and things just start functioning. This Provo High one wasn't done that way. And a lot of the, a lot of the system that's there just is, is hard to work with, with the newer stuff. It isn't really, it's not really compatible, so it's, it becomes a little hard to make it work. Melanie?
I know that technology gets baked up very quickly.
Don't get me started on that one. We don't have enough time. My rant is way long.
So just go on that rant. But I, how long do we anticipate the helpingness gets? Like how far do you think this will pay?
Don't make a liar, I'm going to give you the real answer. So with, with technology, what we're kind of seeing, and I'll just tell you the trend on one side. So in intercom systems, for example, when I first started, I replaced intercom systems for a cost of about $25,000. Replaced the whole intercom system and they'd last about 30 years. Some of the other ones I replaced after that in the early part of my career have lasted about 20, 25. Now they're looking at more like 10. That's what they're saying in the industry. And it's gone from $25,000 to $250,000. So the costs of a lot of this stuff, as much as I love technology, it drives me crazy because you add the technology components and all of a sudden it's a mechanism for them to say, oh hey, we're going to go subscription based. Then the next one is, oh hey, we're going to do obsolescence by software. You know, they'll say, oh, sorry, it's no longer compatible. You have to upgrade. So everything we're seeing, the trend across technology, and you should probably see it in your home on TVs and things as simple as KitchenAids, like they go and replace the metal parts with plastic parts that'll break. I mean, everything's just become just this whole cycle and, and they just make money. It's just, it makes me so mad. I could go off on this for a long time, but it's, it's costing us more and more all the time. I'll just put it this way. I'm going to make this stuff last as long as humanly possible. The things I'm going to pull out in this phase will be used to replace other things at other schools as they fail to keep it functioning as long as we can. We'll save as much money as possible, but yeah, it's a, it's a money train.
So the wireless mics that you just put in and the board that you just installed, I know sometimes it's tricky when you do that, but then you bring in other technology that it needs to interface with. So are those all going to work collectively with this system?
Yes, with this, yes it will.
Okay.
Including the musical theater mic?
Yep. They have, they have over the year mics. We gave them quite a few more mics than they had before and they're all in the right frequencies and we have the right, you know, all the equipment to make that run, so.
No, they got, they have Hades too.
Yeah. It's going to be awesome. I mean, we're not replacing the speakers, we're not replacing the amps. We're not, we're not going to that extent. This is, this is the control system that makes all of it function in the background. And it helps band orchestra inquire because they need to be able to see and hear what's happening in the auditorium. So then they're changing and getting ready and they need to see and hear what's going on. So they'll be able to go touch the screen in their room and pull that up without having to do some sophisticated maneuvering to change it.
How long does it usually take to put all of this new stuff in?
This, this particular one, it'll probably take about a week. Probably a week's time. Depends on a full auditorium upgrade, it would take you months probably.
And just to clarify for the public, this is part of the budget already. We just have to approve it because it's over $50,000.
Yep, yep. And Provo High is going to contribute some, so.
So does this normally come out of your budget or?
So I have, I have a good portion of this built into mine. I, I get about $600,000 a year to upgrade all this stuff. So we have it all in a cycle. We try and replace these things in a cycle. This one like went a little before its cycle. I mean, that's just, that can happen. Sometimes we'll push it beyond their cycle. But honestly, everything we do, we try and, I mean, I have, I have printers out there that are like 23 years old. It's still functioning. So we, we keep technology functioning as long as we can, but at some point you can, you just run into it. You don't have no chance, you have no choice. You have to just do it, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I'm wondering why, why is it in your budget and why not in the school's budget or the capital facility?
Because technology is the one who actually manages all of those projects and services them. So when you look at, and this is a debate that's happened before, when you look at other districts' technology budgets, they may be lower because they do assign them to like a capital, just AV all alone. But technology has all of the positions and all of the service within their department. So it's the reason why it may not match apples to apples across districts.
Well, and as technology moves forward, everyone tries to implement it into their technologies. Intercom was one of the last to come on board, but AV on the AV side, like you go to concerts, all of that, everything's network run, it's all computer based now. It'd blow your mind how it's changed in the AV industry. Pretty cool. I think it's cool, but it makes me upset at the same time because, you know, it's just going to cost a bunch more money.
Thanks for being here today, thank you so much.
Hopefully that answered all your questions?
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to item number 11, and we're going to turn it over to Superintendent Dow for our policy.
Oh my gosh, are you so excited for policy?
We get policy and audit on the same day.
I know, on the same day. There's never going to be a board meeting without policy, I was just going to tell you that right now. It's never going to happen.
It's our job, our main job.
So great. Okay, so I did upload a policy summary, so the policies were put into Board Docs earlier, but I just, these are going to be faster because they are the second readings and there weren't a lot of changes that were coming out. So 1520 is just about the VA appointment, and most of that language that changed in it was that a board can't hire a permanent business administrator, and basically there are lame DACA members of the Board of Education, so unless at least four of them are remaining on the board. So our recommendation is to go ahead and approve this updated policy. Do you guys have any questions about 1520? Wow, no questions. I feel like I'm already winning. Okay. 1523 is VA qualifications and responsibilities that Devon will take and sign the Constitutional Oath of Office and that she will file it. And we also linked on lines 41 to 42 the specific auditing standards that the VA must follow. Any questions on 1523? Okay, recommendation is this will come up in business meetings. So 1540, administrative appointments. So this really lines out our administrative process with the creation of an administrative pool of candidates. Lines 58 to 63 lines out if there are no candidates in the pool and an opening is available, because we do want our candidates to meet a certain minimum requirement, we don't want to just fill the position because we have a position, we want to make sure we're putting the very best people into those positions. I did add a note here that we did not, there was, someone asked why we don't have specific dates in the policy as to when the pool is open, and that really falls to district leadership to determine that, that becomes a little micro energy to put that into policy itself. So you'll notice in the policy, it just says we open it at least once a year, so if for some reason we felt like we needed to open it more times we could. We did have our cabinet look at this, and there was no additional feedback, so our recommendation is to approve this policy. Any questions on that? All right. Policy 1543, we've kind of gone back and forth on this, Policy Committee, we talked about making this a procedure under administrative appointments, and then we landed with just keeping it as a separate policy. We added a purpose in lines 11 through 15 to state, why are we putting in policy principal duties? We don't generally put job descriptions as part of policy. And it really is because the principal serves as kind of the extension of the board as the leader of the school. There are certain things that you are delegating to the principal to do and to handle at the school level on your behalf. And it does acknowledge that it's not an all encompassing list, so I don't want anyone to get the idea that principals only do these things on this list because our principals would be very upset if I suggested that, so. And then just some feedback, we did have some principals, we did send this out to our principals, they just wanted to ensure that they understood that their current practice of working with their custodians was in alignment with the expectations listed in lines 102 to 107, where it's talking about doing an inspection of the building, that there wasn't additional forms that had to be done. We already have those processes already put in place, and it's just following those processes. And then we wanted to add, it was asked if we needed policies or for assistant principals, do we need that for directors and really our district leadership and as we talked as a policy committee, if we start doing that, then policy is going to be uploaded with a whole bunch of job descriptions. The reason for the principal job being kind of different is kind of like a superintendent job, it just really is a kind of a unique animal in that a principal is required to do a lot of things at this kind of school-based level, that becomes kind of an extension of what the board does. Any questions or comments about this policy?
I do have a question. So section seven, which starts on line 42. Well, there's two things. Number, line 44, either I don't understand the meaning or there's an error in the word, danger to the school plant?
It's supposed to be building, but they say they're talking about the plant or the, like, we'll change it to building.
Like a factory?
Yes.
We don't want it to sound like that.
We could just put to the danger to the school.
The school?
Yep. We'll make that adjustment.
And then, I'm curious, the policy committee discussed the new line there about the building entrances being secured, with that very, I know that detail is like newer with the exact timing because of our house builds that have come through and things like that, and that could change again, do we want to be that specific in the policy? Or do we want to just talk more generally about making sure they're adequately, adequately secured?
It is in state law, and so then you would have to come back and look at it.
I think it always, if it changes.
We just have to adjust it again. It'll show up on a lot of policies. Okay. Because I was, if it's a little more like just ensure they're properly secured and monitored, then if the law changes, we don't have to come back and adjust the policy.
The number of minutes changes is what you're worried about?
Right, yeah, the number of minutes.
Because this is a change from 30 minutes to 20.
Yeah, both number seven and number eight.
I don't know. I'm good with whichever way you want to go with that. I think if you're going to pull that part out, you're going to need to reference whatever law it is specifically, and you're going to have to come in and update it anyway as a result of that. So I would just say this creates clarity for, we've already had individuals that are irritated that our entrances are secured 20 minutes prior to the build. We have heard many, we've had already many issues, so actually this, I think, will help our place.
On top of that, by secured, they mean that you have to have your ID to get in?
It's not like you can't get in, it's just that you have to use your ID.
Doors aren't just open.
They're not just open for me. Thank you.
Can parents go into the playgrounds?
Yes.
Different groups?
Yep. Okay. So if I'm understanding correctly, we're going to make the adjustment, if you choose to go ahead and vote for this, and the adjustment is that on line 44, we're going to take out the word plant.
I wondered about it.
I did too, I forgot. I think, I think we put it on there, and I just forgot, I think we've talked about it like 80 times, so I apologize. Okay. Policy 1620 is about district annual reports, this lays out all of the requirements and deadlines for annual fiscal reports. And this is just updating, the blue is just updating different due dates and in law, who we're submitting those reports to. And so now that the state superintendent is kind of the representative or the face of USBE, it used to say in code that it would go to USBE, now it says state superintendent, then state auditor, and then we made sure that all of those states are in alignment. Are there any questions on that policy or any, there are weird words that we need to change?
Well, I was thinking of the title, because right now it just looks like any report, but when you read it, this is a financial report, so you can insert, I don't know, district annual financial report?
Yeah, sure.
Unless this is going to be a generic policy, and then every procedure is about a different report that we have to submit.
No, I think that makes sense. It does say, it does state in line 48 that there are other statistical and financial reports, and the annual letter of assurances that we do, that starts on line 56, is not just financial. So those, that letter of assurances that comes in actually asks you things like, do all of your elementary schools say the pledge of allegiance every day? And I have to sign up on that. Do you all have a flag? So I think that's why it doesn't just say financial, but if...
I think we're...
Okay. Okay. So it is just because of that last part, Terry, that it kind of makes it a little... Okay, are we good with second readings? Okay, let's go to first readings, I'm excited, I'm ready to take notes. Here we go, these are very exciting. Okay, policy 1550. This is, oh gosh, I got hustle, we might have to move some of these to business meetings. So Jennifer, you tell me when to be quiet, and then we'll move on. Employee suggestions to the board. So this is a new policy. It provides an avenue by which employees can contact board members and provide feedback and suggestions to them directly. And I just tried to put some context there. Historically, there have been districts, not Provo, that have prohibited or greatly discouraged employees from contacting board members directly. So this is a policy to provide that protection for employees. Line 20 just talks about that there is a log of suggestions created. Some individuals are asking, why would you create a log? Why does that become part of public record? I think that becomes important because there isn't a name of the employee that is attached to it, it just states what the suggestion is, and it becomes part of the record so that as the board is looking at things, the public and especially our employees can see, are there issues that keep coming up that keep getting ignored, that aren't getting the attention that they need? And so it just provides, you know, like, we've tried these other avenues, this creates an option for the board to kind of see that track record of what's happening. You can also see if there are some issues that are more active in some parts of the district versus others, or if something is district-wide that's happening. Lines 31 to 35 state that if we're including, like, if there's a complaint about an individual, like about a principal, for example, or something like that, we would, we would take, we would redact that information out because we don't talk about things that are confidential or personnel issues in a, in a public meeting that way. It is something that the board could opt to talk about in a closed session if they had that. Then the question became, okay, so...
I have a question about that.
Yeah, please.
It does get admitted from the log, will we still be able to see that? Like, how would the board be informed?
You can, you can still redact it, it's just when it goes into Board Docs, it wouldn't be there. So you're going to have a document where you're entering those, those pieces of information, and we'll talk about that in the procedure. So that information will still be available in there, it just won't, it's just when Bonnie goes to put it onto Board Docs, that stuff would be pulled off.
Board book?
Board book, sorry, board book.
It's going to only take me 200 more minutes.
Policy 1550, Procedure 1 is about how to submit the employee suggestions, and we wanted to have two different ways in which this happens. One would be to create an online form where it really truly is anonymous, like you don't have to submit an email address. We don't currently have that form, but once this policy gets put in place, and I work with Caleb and Eliza, builds the form, it'll be pretty easy, it's going to be pretty standard. What that will do is...
Just for employees, not for...
Just for employees, correct. Then those will go to Bonnie, and then Bonnie will enter it into our Google Doc record. The other way in which individuals can contact you is obviously they could email you individually or they can email the entire board, unless they're making up an email, which some people do, I get that, then those might be traceable back, right? And so we wanted to have just a couple of ways. We prefer it when people obviously leave their information so you can read. Lines 24 to 36, the log of suggestions is created, you would, if you just get an email to yourself, you would all have access to this, you would just go in and add in what that suggestion is, and just document it quick as to, as to what's happening. If it goes to the whole board, then the procedure would be, board leadership would enter it, and if it's going through that form, it would go through Bonnie. So it's not going through the hands of any, it's not going through the hands of the superintendent, it's not going through the hands of Caleb or anybody else. So then they would put those in, and then you could start to look at that, and then you would use your process by which to get it addressed at a board meeting where you have the document where you put board items on as a suggestion, and if three of you say yes, we need to have this as a, as a talking point, you could do that.
Yeah, I guess my one question just is, I was thinking about, you know, as feedback comes into a board member, I can see why it's important to share the general content or concern so that we have a record, this has come to the attention of a board member, but I can also see the concern of someone who would reach out to a board member not wanting to file a suggestion, but rather just to have kind of a conversation that, like, where is the line? I guess I'm just trying to think of that, like, when I say, oh, let me type what this person just told me into this log for everyone versus, and I guess I want to say that that would be individual discretion, but I'm not sure that that would then comply. Does that make sense? I'm kind of wrestling, I'm just trying to think that through in my brain, and sometimes, depending on what it is, if it's not something that, I mean, some things I just feel like someone's just having a dialogue, just not because they want this to raise a huge issue, but they're just thinking through something.
I think that was, I think that was one of Christie's questions that she put on the document too, was like, does this mean that every single thing that ever goes by a board member is going to be logged in this?
Right.
And I think there's a piece of it where, well, I kind of, we kind of want to know what the patterns are happening, but one of the ways we could do it is we could just say, if you email, that just goes to the board member, but if you want it to be part of this log, then it could go through this online form, that could be a way where we could solve that to create that distinction.
What do you basically think? I'd like to hear what others...
Or if you have another idea about how to do that.
I don't have a formal way to do it necessarily, but I, if it's anything that's pretty serious and I'm not sure whether, whether they want it to go on, I ask them, is this something you want me to officially go forward? But I don't know how you would put that into policy, but I, that's a practice that I have, is, is this something you want to move forward with or not? And usually, they choose to, if they choose to do it, they choose to do it a different way, right? Rather than going to me. But I don't know if that can even be a policy, but that's personally what I do.
Yeah. That's a great question, right?
And maybe, and maybe it's something to think about, and then Policy Committee can wrestle with it next, we have our next meeting next Tuesday, and so as you think about what that, what that looks like.
Oh, we can talk about policy.
I was just going to add, is Google Doc the right form, or should we do Google Sheets? I mean, when people use Google Forms...
Yeah, we can use a Google, we can use a Google.
They usually put it into a sheet that's a little easier than, whatever's easier for Caleb.
It'll be Bonnie. It'll be Bonnie.
Yeah, that was my other question.
It'll be Bonnie.
Where they go through.
Yeah, it goes through Bonnie.
I guess maybe I will say what I'm thinking for everyone. If I'm look, if I'm, because I am trying to think too, like, you know, tracking things, the spirit of this really is so that we have a pulse and, you know, really have a way that, you know, employees, the district employees can access the board, but also don't want to be something that feels like, oh gosh, we're keeping track, right? Which, I, maybe you guys see what I'm saying. What I'm looking at though is this idea between like, well, what if it just goes to a board member, and we don't want to share it with everybody, they just want to have a conversation? This seems more specific to like suggestions, like, is there a difference between just like a concern or complaint? Where this is more like a suggestion, hey, this is what's happening, I don't know, because as I'm reading this, this just seems different then. Or is it anything and everything goes into the form?
So a complaint to me goes through our employee policy and would go through that process where you're going to start, like, if somebody reaches out to you and says they have this issue, you're going to refer them back to the person that's going to help them. I think this is more of like, this isn't that formal of a process. It's like, could you guys please like figure out your calendar like earlier or something? And then you can be like, Wendy, stop messing with the calendar. Like, like, is it, you know, is it something like that? Or we would, you know, I think it's more along those lines rather than, I have a grievance of something that's happening. That would be, that would be something that would be very different in my mind. And that's why I think it takes out that confidential piece, where that's got to go through a different avenue if they're starting to talk about, I'm really upset at my job, I don't like where I work, this is the climate, this is the environment, that would be a different conversation to me.
Which I guess in my mind, and that would be easy as a board member, when you get an email about something, is it a suggestion or is it something else? You know, like, if it's, that it would, you would be able to, for the most part, make a decision, oh yeah, let's put this on a log because this is a suggestion that we could add to this document that's going to be useful for the board. Where I think you would know, like, oh, this is, okay, maybe let's, we need to figure out what this.
Cause someone raised this concern and I redirected them to their principal.